I'll call this May 6th of 2025, Duff County Public Schools, School Work Sessions to order Dr. Argus.
Thanks, Eric. Good morning. Provide some updates. Beginning with construction updates. Macy, they continue to make progress. Over Easter, they placed some units up on the roof. They placed four, if I recall correctly. The units in the gym, they're working on trying to get those up and going. We've got the, for lack of a better term, the sock duct in the gym up. That's ready to go. That was conflated when they fired the units up here recently. So they did some ground boring to test soil conditions. And for Macy Phase Two addition back in the back, that was done a couple of weeks ago. We've had preliminary meetings at Eastern Giles and Nares High School for renovations. And we continue to have them for Giles. We have them every other, every other week until they get started. And they're gonna really, what, next Monday, May 12th, they're gonna start getting into the gyms and start doing some work in the, in the gyms. Start to tear out bleachers and that sort of stuff. And then they'll really start going forward June 2nd, when we get the kids and everybody out. Nares Elementary, Middle School and Garage Roof, we shared, shared cost information with you for that previously. Talked to you about it, shared with you last week. Talked to ZMM, they're working on getting contracts written and taken care of so they get those signed. I'll officially ask you next, get to you next week at the board meeting to officially approve the bid amount and the contract so that that can be officially done. We just mentioned the bleachers. Want to bring up the bleachers particularly at Giles High School. We've had an outside organization express interest for, for those bleachers when they're removed. So we will be, I will be bringing that to you next Thursday as well to ask you to surplus those bleachers. And provide them, we can provide them to that outside organization. Contractor knows. And it's gonna work through getting them out, try to coordinate so they can be there to pick them up and that sort of thing.
Yeah, they're starting at seven o'clock on May 12th.
Yeah, start the next, next week.
They really will be there at seven o'clock.
So as long as you all are comfortable with that, we'll bring it to you next week. I assume that you have no issue with those bleachers being used by another organization outside. Otherwise, they're just gonna be destroyed, taken hauling off. Also, next week on Board Book, you will see several documents for your approval. Those are all going to be the literary loan documents similar to what you approved for Macy, but they will be for the, for the other projects. Nares High School, Giles High School, Tech Center, Eastern and Nares Elementary. You'll have the School Board Official Intent Resolution and the School Board Initiation Resolution for both, for all five projects. So that'll be on the board agenda for you all to approve next week so we can kind of keep that process moving along with the literary fund for those, for those projects when we get kicked off. We're gonna start receiving invoices. We've already received some invoices for Giles High School, and I'm sure we'll start receiving some invoices for other projects.
So to bring you up to the date on the Head Start Building, we are, reached out to Mobile Modular. They're one of the only companies that responded to our request. In terms of used units, they do not have any available. Apparently, those go like within a week of being put on the lot after they're refurbished. The used units were five to 15 years old anyway. I talked to the gentleman and he was going, he was going to check North Carolina to see if they had any in stock. But he said, probably not. I have not heard back from him. The new model, I think, and let me get you the exact number. The new models are, take about three months from the time you order them. To get them here, 30 days, it would be 30 days. For ZMM to do the engineering package. So once we get the go-ahead from you folks, we can start the ball rolling. I reached out to, I contacted EVO, which is the state procurement program, and asked if Mobile Modular was on EVO. They are, but they don't have a contract. Mobile Modular is a member of another procurement contract called Sourcewell. Greg, let me know that we can use Sourcewell to purchase the Mobile Modular just through a P O, us issuing a P O. The only thing, he called to me, he said, I needed to get a copy of the solicitation, RFP, and we need to make sure that they have cooperative language in that. He said, Greg said he would be happy to, to look at that and assist us with that. So, and of course, we'd have to get an updated quote.
I think it's about $145,000 for the, the unit itself, plus about $27,000 to get it installed, or if not, about $30,000.
So, yeah, it's, it's, so we'll have to do the engineering package. Since it's in a FEMA flood zone, we need to make sure to get the exact information that the town in Nares wants. It probably coordinated with John Ross too on that and get them rolling. But the one, the one they provided us, the campus maker ModPod, I don't think we need that. He explained, that's more like a Lego system where you can do a campus. I said, we just need two classrooms and two bathrooms. And that's the 24 by 60 MS mobile classroom. Yeah, and we just need a go-ahead from you guys to get that going.
And when is this gonna set exactly?
Behind the Head Start building.
Behind the current Head Start building, yeah.
Where the, you know where they park the buses right now?
Yes.
Right, right in there.
And it'll be about six feet off the ground?
About eight.
Eight, six, eight feet off there.
Okay.
And I asked him if that was an issue. I asked the gentleman at Mobile Modular, and he, he didn't seem to think it was a concern.
Go down, go down into North Carolina, you'll see. Go forth and go.
Go forth, alright.
Have a conversation with them and get the, get a new one.
Don't forget to let Head Start know, we'll probably need to get it, probably modify that lease with them. But I don't, I don't think they're gonna be upset. They still get, they still get the building that they like and a potential.
When we talk.
Potential removal of the speed bump for them coming back.
We talked to Mobile Modular, we'll see if we can't hurry them along a little bit.
We've got all these construction projects, Mike. You know, they don't have much building we got going on. Do you ever know when we might come into an issue, we need to get a.
Might need one, might need one at a different location.
Yep, you never know what problems will, unanticipated problems will come with this. Hope not.
Right.
And that, well, they're, they're gonna be working with, for the, the other units we currently have, both at Macy and at Eastern right now.
And then construction-wise, you all wanna get questions I wanna talk about?
I'm just curious why we're doing all these floors and we're gonna do construction on inside, running on top of.
It's not the ideal situation, but we've tried to coordinate between the contractors and the floor, the floor finishing people. If we don't do it now, we will not be able to get it done for 12 to 18 months. The floor at Giles is in such poor shape, we're just gonna do more damage to it if we don't do anything. Eastern's, Eastern's will be okay. We've coordinated with them. Nares, we've coordinated with RL Price on that one and at Nares Elementary. It's, it's not ideal, but we're in a situation where we don't have a choice.
Contractors know that they're in there, they gotta protect the floor. They gotta put something down on top of to make sure they're protecting, they're running stuff on.
So at Giles, they're going to remove the bleachers. ProSource is coming in to do the floors. It'll take three weeks. KNA will be back in there and that, three misses to do it, graphics cure everything. And KNA knows that they need to protect the tarp.
They'll put tarp and they'll put some kind of plywood, some floor on top or particle board on top.
On top of the tarp.
Because once they start doing the roof, as we have seen at Macy, it will knock 20 years of dust out. We had very specific conversations with everybody involved about these floors. I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Nares High School, I don't know that RL Price is gonna be doing any roof type work.
Then they ask the units up on top that they'll have to do the ductwork, but again, they'll, they know that, that they gotta protect it and that's their responsibility.
And that floor's not that bad, but it's, I would be worried with what the same company did, that it'll get worse when they get the use on it again for volleyball and basketball actually.
Cause Giles, and Nares is not as bad as Giles yet.
Yeah.
Giles is, looks like you had, got summer and it's starting to break off.
There was no hard, any effect.
We just got hose about that much a bit last year.
Macy, I think, will be okay. They pretty, pretty much finished the, the roof work. They know the schedule. RL Price knows our schedule there. We do have a painter there. Eastern is, we're just gonna lightly scrub the top, finish on and go. And that's kind of gonna be our overflow gym for some of these practices as well. So we wouldn't be in this position if we hadn't experienced the issues we did with the dumping we used last year.
Problem of low bidder sometimes.
And ProSource has provided us a schedule, and if you're curious, I can share that with you, but they have provided us a schedule for the summer.
In case y'all hear, if anybody asking, Nares Elementary wanted the bleachers, the home bleachers from the high school in Nares. But it costs a traditional 17.5 to, to pull them out for, for them to not trash them.
A thousand seven or fifty.
No, it's just 17.5.
No, I'm sorry.
But Bobby looked at it, take about four weeks for them, the county crew, maintenance crew to do it, which would be. They, they got, that's just too much time to occupy them on a project like that. Especially, I think Randy said that new bleachers for there cost 40,000. They, they got the original bleachers from 96 or 97.
In the elementary school?
Yeah.
They've got, I'm interested in the old bleachers that you can buy by hand. And it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't make sense to, to us that you put, we're tearing bleachers out, putting new bleachers in. Why would we take the old bleachers and move them to another place?
Right.
It doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
But not, not even, if it's 40,000 to do that, that's.
Yeah.
Go ahead and get new ones.
Yeah.
That's a, okay, so that's a rough cost. I won't get the bleacher price until tomorrow. I think Kevin had reached out to Terry and the one that seemed the most responsive said he couldn't get it costed until tomorrow. Randy told me he used 40,000. So it's an additional total cost to move the existing bleachers to the parking lot, be picked up, others moved, and there will be 1,750. The other issue that we're dealing with is nobody will certify, well, ZMM will not certify. If we reinstall those, they, they can't. It's outside their scope of liability. We would have to get another company to certify, certify them. And I asked Randy, who to certify them? He said, maybe FNR or Slavel, which is a little strange, because I kind of associate them with structural into your title.
Structure.
But I think we would probably get into a little bit of an issue trying to get the.
It makes sense, my man. Thanks for writing that down.
Yeah, now, we can't get the, it probably would not be installed until next summer.
Cause we, we had to order, we had to tell the bleacher cut group whenever we initially met, it was a month, I think it was a month ago. And that, that was gonna be tight for them to get it. If we told them by that, we may not think it went Tuesday or Wednesday. They needed to know by that Friday to get ordered, so that it would be ready to be put in.
It's, it's going to be, just to give y'all a heads up, it's going to be a very tight schedule this summer to get these bleachers in and timed for their first games. Kelly and Steve know this. They have a little delay to schedule their volleyball games away, but it's, it's going to be tight. So I'll respond back to Kevin Keane that bleachers, just demo them and take them off in time.
Any other question on construction?
One thing, we still have not received any information on the paving bid from the county yet, and maybe we can talk about that tomorrow at a meeting. As far as I know, Bob has been planning and working on the track with ZMM. So that's as far as I know where that's going. I have made it clear to anybody that will listen, that's a high priority this summer is to get that track done.
I talked to Mr. McCleary, and he says probably the next seven days that, that big, big tackle to go out while you're on paving. I did talk to, follow up with John Hale about that wall at the, and now they're gonna get back and look. They think there may be some structure that they need to do on that wall of the parking lot there, so.
So, okay, the last word I had was from Terry was they were timed, and that's been two months ago, three months ago.
I, I think, I think I told him about that. That was, I, that, that wall was just concerns me. That's how big it is for the paving. So I think they're, they're looking closer at that.
Okay. Question.
You want to discuss the Nares speed signs for schools?
Yeah, see, well, I made sure if you got, is that the quote for 24/7?
I got that yesterday, or the day before yesterday.
Alright, I, that looks, I think, that looks good. Me, you guys good with that? That's within the realm of what we discussed. Okay, go ahead, pull the trigger on.
The only thing we need to is the letter agreement.
This is the draft we've got, right?
Yeah, that's, that's, I am by no means a lawyer, but that's the best I could come up with. Do we need to have counsel review this prior to issuing it to the town in Nares, or are you okay with it?
I'm okay with this from this, I mean, this is more of an understanding, not. The town can't obligate, none of us can really obligate ourselves without issuing a bond.
I was just, you know, language in there and everything.
I think it accurately captures what we're trying to do.
Perfect, thank you. I did negotiate the cell fee now for $400 for each sign to $300 each sign. So that's, you know.
Small wins.
Small wins. I will, I will forward this draft to Terry Nicholson, is that okay?
That's fantastic.
And have them review it. If he's okay with it, then we'll put it in our letterhead, have you and Dr. Argus and Mr. Nicholson sign it. But if you're okay with it.
Just go ahead and order the signs.
Order the signs, yes sir. I'll order the signs. I just need to get with them and make sure their speed limit, what they want, 25 or 20 or whatever they want, make sure we get that on there.
I don't feel reaching and slowing down any, but I was Old Montgomery County, we ran a couple of their schools. They've got, they've got this speeding up sign, fast sign, they, immediately, they also put just a little bit of sign, tells what speeds you're doing to get it going through it to the motors. I bet we waste time looking for it. Maybe a few hundred dollars, that'd be a big plus. People know what they're doing as soon as they go into it. I will slow it down.
Yeah, I think at this point, I mean, they, they had asked for it, and it's, it's their, it's their basis.
I, I believe that might be part of their program of that speed enforcement. Montgomery County does that, and we did some research on that. And that is very costly. And how they pay for that is they, you have a yearly, and I'm, I'm just kind of paraphrasing, and I might not be very detailed correct. But essentially, it's a yearly fee that you have to, technology fee that you have to pay. If you don't generate enough money from the speeding tickets, the county, the school system is required to pay that technology fee. And that was quite substantial. But they're a more heavily populated area, and I think that's what you're referring to. I think that's part of that.
You're just a little, on the same page, it gives you, you go into it, it gives you.
It's running the radar on you.
It's radar.
It's radar. It was, it was, it's not a couple hundred, it's.
I was gonna say, I imagine that's very expensive.
I was shocked when I saw that.
Bring the whole sort of thing down.
I'm gonna have one of those sign up, one of us has signed the agreement today and get it in.
Hopefully make the town.
Uh, you wanna talk about buses?
Sure.
Uh, I provided you folks with the bid sheet on those.
Big bids from Sunny Marion and Kingmore and Bluebird, three different companies. You see the price for one, and you see the price for the house for two.
Now, one of the conditions on our bid was it had to be delivered by July 1st, and none of them, I don't think any of them can just get it to us by July 1st. And a lot of times, what David has told me is he can pay it with a dead number, and pretty much Sunny Marion said that. Of course, they, they're not a little bit, but Bluebird said they had a method that they could bill us for. I don't know if it's, that's something that they're gonna have to approve. I don't know.
Did you also see that only one company has gas buses, the other seven provide those bids, cause they did not have them at this time?
I could reach out to Chad Waller and see, we can see when they can get them. I think they can get it to us sooner than any of the other three, other two. I just, if you wanna pay for it out of this year's money, and David and Bob Argus could probably talk better on that. But it might be an issue paying for it out of this year's budget. Might have to use carryover.
Possible, use carryover.
Carryover.
I, I just have to see when they can tell us if they can get it to us.
I just need to know what type of bus you want, and do you wanna go with Bluebird as the.
I, I think, Mr. Williams raised a good point. If you say somebody with gas, let's go ahead. My thought would be, get two gas, let's start keeping track of our two newest diesels and our two newest newest gas. Both gas mileage and maintenance costs and all those things are, you know, at that point, we'll have our own data to, to look at and see which direction as we go forward, what we wanna go, go to.
Are you saying that we might, we might have to pay for it out of this year's money because it can't come in till after July 1st? So it's about the timing, not about.
The timing of, when they give us a bill for the chassis.
Absolutely, like trials and understandings.
And I think what we, what we would do in that situation is if we should know by the end of this fiscal year, we would just tell the county. You know, that would be specifically year more, you know, normally they just say, hey, you can get your carryover and you can keep it. But what we would say is there 297,000 or whatever it is on there is that you're marked for. And we're authorized to use that as soon as we pay for it.
Again, I can't give you a specific timeframe when the buses will come in. I just know that Bluebird alluded to that theirs would be sooner than anybody else's. It could be August, it could be September, it could be October, it could be December, just where we fall in the plate line.
How much warranty coming in, two years, three years?
I'd have to go back and look at the.
And they actually, they, they have to send their mechanics to draw us before warranty work. We don't want to take the bus to store.
That's how I understand it. Thomas does the same thing. Thomas will send their mechanic out if we have any type of warranty work, so.
But what I understand is that everybody's looking forward to the gas one, because it's just such more economical, more fuel effective. I would say, keep up, keep up with them.
As long as y'all are comfortable with it, we'll let them know we're gonna go order two, two of them. See if we get the invoice, see if we can get it taken out of care of this year, if not, we'll work on it.
Yeah, so we can invoice now.
I think they can invoice us, but I don't know if it's what we need for our regulations. I, we'll just have to talk to them. I mean, we have options. We can take it out of carryover next year, or we can take that.
You can do this.
We'll let them.
We'll work on getting those ordered from Bluebird. They'll officially ask you to approve that next, next Thursday, right, at the board meeting.
You have information in there on school nutrition, Debbie's or April Cafe, I believe from David. And the trainer's tracker information. We're here, let me ask you if you have any questions on that.
That's what Giles High School just wanted to do. Steal away again. Pardon everybody.
Which one are you looking at?
Giles Record Specialty.
Oh, you're looking at David's Cafe Tracker?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, all this is awful tempting when you're pulling into the high school. We will never optimize there because there's too many options right next to the school. My kids, my kids were gonna run it off.
Okay. Mr. Williams had inquired about summer food and reached out to ZTECH. I got a message from them, and apparently. They were relying heavily on AmeriCorps workers. To make this program a viable program and. I think three days ago, they got information that their AmeriCorps staff was going to be cut. They went from 16 workers to three. Which with three workers, and when I thought the ride, those workers were going to carry the food and deliver the food. So his exact words is, we haven't figured out a plan yet. We are going from 16 AmeriCorps worker, AmeriCorps slots to three. Basically, a payroll increase from $9,600 to $72. They can't financially absorb that. We are still working on it and want to make it work, but I don't have a viable plan.
Mike, is it an option for us to take it back over subcontract, I mean, how much? It, it looks like they need six, you know, $68,000, round about. I mean, if we ran the numbers and subcontracted with them to do it, could, and fill that hole in our budget, can we get the money back? Or how much would we lose? can we get the money back or how much will we lose?
I, I don't have an exact number of how much you lose. They, we, they would have to be the entity doing this because they have filled out all the paperwork. They have non-congruent, they filled it out for non-congruent. One of the options he asked me is if could we do congruent feeding, which means come together and eat. I don't know that that's a viable option either at one of our schools. And I told him, I said, we've tried that before. The problem is we can't get the kids to, you know, they, we even ran a bus route and we can't get them to the schools. So I think they're still working on a plan. One of the things I thought maybe we could, you know, utilize our buses. If they could prepare the food, the 10-day drops, we have the addresses. Maybe we could come up with a, a bus route, send our bus over, pick them up, pick food up and deliver it. But I, I don't, no, until they give me some concrete hard information of their request and wants, I mean, I don't know that we can formulate a positive plan. I, as far as subcontracting out, I, I don't know if we, what that would look like financially. I don't know that we would be on the positive side of things, but we would get the kids fed.
I, I do think, you know, I, I think there's a priority to try to get these kids fed and some. And, you know, we weren't gonna get the revenue off of it this year. We see that as a positive, but I think even at this point, if we know what their budget hole is, you know, whether, you know, what they think they're gonna receive reimbursement wise from the state, we need to know that number to see, see if that's a viable option if we've got, you know, because I do think we've got our responsibility to try to feed these kids.
Is any of our cafeterias available? So, another. What about the, what about any staff? Any staff help?
Uh, we, we have not made arrangements with them for that. And typically with that, we struggle to find staff to, to work. Even the summer school option of it. We have, you know, we have a core group that would do the entire summer, maybe two, three. I think we would, I mean, I, we could, I will do whatever y'all ask me to do here. I just.
I think we did try that. I, I just don't, I just don't believe cats will do it. That's been three weeks, I don't have any.
Well, the, the sad part is not only does this affect us, and even if we had used Feeding Southwest, they rely heavily on AmeriCorps. The government has just cut those programs to the, you know, bone. So Montgomery County's gonna suffer, I mean, because they were gonna work with Montgomery County. So that potentially would affect them maybe. I don't know that for a fact, but I, I need him to give me some information to see what base we have to work from. And I need to, I'll reach out to him and say, how can we partner with you to make this a viable program?
I mean, are we able to utilize the A students or our own core volunteers? Cause I know like during COVID, me and a bunch of other parents would go out and work in the cafeterias to bag the food and bust the food and deliver the food and all of that. Like, I think we could probably rally enough support to help, but I just don't know if we've got parameters or rules against that in this case.
The thing is, you would have to go to Montgomery, you'd have to go to their location in Montgomery to do that. So it would logistically and.
What about, can we use, can we get, is KJ an option that, I don't know what they got kitchen.
I was gonna say, we've, yeah, we've got it.
I, I believe it. So they were going to do 10-day meal drops and they were going to do frozen food. They'd actually purchased the machine to do it and all that, which I believe is probably the best option. It's the easiest option. When you go start packing all these, you know, they'd already had their menus approved. You have to have the menus approved and everything else. I think they had gone through all of that, had it approved. When you start packaging 10-day meal things individually, it takes a lot of manpower. The frozen part, I don't, I don't know that much about, I don't know anything about it really. I think we just need to sit down and have a conversation of what, how can we help? What do you need from us money-wise, where are we at? And try to formulate a plan to pull this.
Can you buy these meals from another agency?
You can buy, you can buy the, the prepackaged meals. They're four dollar, I think they're around four dollars a piece. The agency on aging does that for meals on wheels now, but they're four dollars a piece. Your profitability just, you just, it goes out the window. We can't do it because we have not filled out the paperwork. That timeline for us to do it has passed unless, and I don't know that we can get an exemption. Now, what we could do.
How many meals a day are you?
We had 146 people signed up. You're gonna do two meals a day. So 300, so you're talking 300, uh, probably, I don't know if they're gonna do breakfast and lunch or lunch and supper, but it's two meals a day. So if you do 300.
3,000 packaged in 10 days.
You know, times four, that's 1,200 a day, times 10, that's 12,000 every 10 days. But then even with that.
Milk and gluten in that too? Is that milk and gluten in that?
Uh, I don't know, not with, I, well, I don't know. I don't know what the prepackaged one was, the meal was. But even with that, we'd have to get it approved, the menu would have to be approved.
So kind of, basically asking a waiver, we're stuck with whatever tax got.
That's, that's why I was hoping to have, my conversation with him was give me, give me where you're at. Give me your wishes and wants and let's work the problem from there. And I had, I, sounds like they're still trying to formulate something and pull it out of, out of.
So our only viable options are either one, filling in whatever, some funding for them, or number two, subcontract, being their subcontractor.
Provide some type of labor and I don't know what labor pool we would have. And I told him, I said, even our folks, when they do summer schools, 25, $25 for managers, $20 an hour for lawn workers. And with AmeriCorps, I think it was, you know, I don't think they had to pay, I don't know that they had to pay anything.
Well, they.
Maybe a little.
It sounds like, I think if they can get it, it sounds like preparing it. I don't know what that cost would be if they could prepare it. We could fill it in with volunteers to get it delivered on the drop.
That was, that was kind of where I was at. You know, we could utilize our buses and maybe try to find a volunteer to help the bus drivers deliver this food.
I thi, I think, I think, I think you're, if that's the option, I think first call us to Jeff Dinger and, you know, get some A hours for these, for these A students.
And I think one of the things is, you know, after the meeting, maybe I can reach out to him and say, hey, if you folks can prepare this, if you can prepare it, the frozen meals, what if we sent our buses and a volunteer to come and deliver it? Would that work? Now, we would get probably no money from it, but the kids would be fed. I just don't know the congregant, I don't know that it would.
Yeah, I have not, we've talked this way. If you planned it out, you might pull it out, but not just like, yeah.
Not, not without cafeterias.
Well, I mean, Macy, they're replacing the freezer refrigerator, plus they're doing work in the cafeteria. Giles, I mean, they're going full bore, uh, Eastern, you know, one day your power's up, one day your power's down, you know, it's just, it's, it's, to do that is going to be.
I, I checked on these other, the place you said, who'd you say would get the meals from, maybe two or?
PFG.
I, I checked with them, said that's an option.
Now, here's the thing. You, we can do something from the general side. You just can't use school nutrition money to buy it. So if you want to purchase the prepackaged meals, you can pay for that out of the general side. You just can't, you can't use any school nutrition money to do that. That's how I understand that. So if you wanted to do, and I don't believe you would have to adhere to, and I'd have to verify, so don't take this as gospel. I don't think you'd have to adhere to X, Y, and Z regulations if you're just going to feed them on your own. You could do the prepackaged meals and you could do what. And you could, you could give them, at least they'd have lunch for 10 days. Now, we have had difficulty buying the prepackaged meals, but if we commit to, I'd have to talk to PFG about that to see where, see if we could even get them. But you're talking a chunk of change if it comes out of the, the general side with no reimbursement.
I think trying to saddle yourself with tax is a better only financially viable option, minimize it.
Let me see what I can do and see if we can partner with them and what they're, you know, see where we're at. I mean, we're not the only school system, Smith and With, or not, uh, school systems here in West, Feeding Southwest, Feeding Southwest for their summer meals. And I'm, I'm sure it's impacting a lot of folks. I haven't heard anything officially, but it's just not a good, a good thing to happen this close to summer for anybody. I'm seeing what I can find out and get back to you as soon as possible.
I still get to have other projects. I, I'd say more supervisors helps. I'd say more supervisors helps do this, important.
All right, put that on, something to talk about tomorrow. Okay.
Y'all want to discuss vans? Is that something that you might want to move forward on this year? If so, about, you know, we, we have two options. We can buy them used, but we can also buy them off Eva at a set price and get them a lot quicker.
We've got, we've got room, correct, we've got room to do it for this year's. Okay, let's go get this.
How many?
Let's get.
Two.
Two, two new ones.
Two. You want the fours?
Yeah. Transmission's not so much.
How's the plan coming up? Get rid of some of these other.
Terry has identified the older vehicles. We could, we could get rid of some of our older ones if we wanted to. And we, uh, we just need to sit down. I think the last one, there was a discussion about getting rid of some of our newer ones. I just, do you wanna get rid of the newer ones or do you wanna get rid of the older ones or? I just, what, which ones do you want to get rid of?
I think we've got older ones and they're fine when they're being used. We keep those. The ones that are sitting there doing nothing that may get used once a year, we need to get rid of those. But if, if we look and we've got 10 Fusions and we've got, you know, all of, in two or three model years, we need to look at and see, okay, if one of those is getting driven, I think some of those are getting a thousand miles. Is it a month or a year?
A year.
A thousand miles a year. All we're doing with that, I mean, you're losing $6,000 a year in depreciation. So, you know, we, we just paid $6 a mile just in depreciation cost to use that. So I think, you know, that, that's what we've gotta look at going forward is when we bring new ones in, you know, we need to make sure that we're better managing the use of our fleet and the size of our fleet. You know, that's, I think that's where it is. We just got a bunch out there that look nice, but, and they may, you know, they may get used. Like, I'm sure last week with everybody going to TSA and spring sports, a lot of them get used. Whereas we can look and see, that's where we can talk about at that point, when we maximize the usage of the fleet, then we look at raising that mileage rate.
Have you thought about doing this, given each school X amount of cars? They manage their own fleet. If a car's not available at your school, then you get reimbursed the government mileage. And that way, each high school gets a van or now two vans. Each high school would maybe get a car or two cars, maybe whatever. How have you wanted to shuffle it out and take that? Let's schools do that. They, they, here's your cars. You can use them. If not, you get reimbursed the, the government rate.
Should we go on some kind of line?
I think you can look at that, but I, I, you know, I still see, you know, you still see when you've got the, the elementary, middle school trips, that they need those vans if, if you put them up there. Yeah, what I don't want is a situation where, you know, if we got, let's just say TSA and you've got one of the high schools having those vans and they just, when you start giving to the schools and they get territory.
Yeah.
With them.
Yeah.
And that's what I don't, you know, that's, that's, it's a good thing because I do think they might take care of them more. But at the same time, I also think that, that, you know, it's, it's kind of Jim's face and everything else.
I will, we'll see if we can identify some of our newer vehicles that are used around 1,000, 1,000 miles or less a year and have a list for you. And then have a, Terry had already, Terry Jones had already prepared the ones for the oldest ones and just, so here you go.
You know, you identified that one that's got the, the special partition in it and that kind of, you know, I know there's vehicles that fit the needs. I don't wanna take those away. It's just the ones that we see that, you know, they don't move for.
We could have.
Yeah.
See what we can figure out.
And, and well, you know, if there's, if there's a compelling need, that, yeah, then they keep that. Cause again, it, it is cheaper for us to keep from a depreciation standpoint. It's much cheaper for us to keep those ones that we've already eaten the depreciation on.
Now, we're at this kind of tricky, some of these vehicles are sped that, uh, purchased through sped funds. But I believe I've been told that after a year, they, they can revert back into the general fleet too.
And again, we, we're, I don't, we don't in any one way want to not, you know, they need them for sped especially. Yeah, but, you know, I, I think we just, we just need to be a little more efficient because I think it's one of the things you hear as well. It was like, we got all these cars sitting out here and, you know, I, so we, we can take care of that.
We'll, we'll figure something out.
Couple other items before we get into the budget. Budget's gonna be the longest con, longer conversation. Uh, summer work schedule, just so you know, anticipate June 2nd. We'll move back to our four-day, Monday through Thursday, to 7:30 to 4:30. Just, just make you aware of it. Friday's the office will be closed, but again, everybody will make sure that they have access to the emails and that sort of stuff, make sure they have, they can address something if they need to address them. Also Thursday, June 19th, that's June 18th, that will be a holiday, so just so you know. DOE waiver, um, shared with you before. As you know, we, uh, had 13 non-scheduled virtual days. We are allotted, allowed that 10, then we gotta have a request to waiver. We submitted paperwork on February 24th for that waiver to DOE. Resubmitted on March 5th. And at this time, I've checked with them two times. I've checked with them on March 23rd on the status, got a response on the 25th. Checked with them on April 15th and got a response back on the 28th of April. They don't have an updated timeline for me at this time.
Wow, that's weird.
I'm going to reach out to there tomorrow and see if I can get a little bit of help to get that moved along because if, if, if that waiver. Because if, if, if that waiver is not approved, then we're gonna, we have three days we've got to make up. And you know what three days are, that's June second, third, and fourth. And we need to know, and we didn't know that yesterday. Because at this, at this point in time, we're, we're running out of time. And I don't know why we, we've not been told by, by them told us, so. So I'll reach out again, but I want you to know that, uh, we're probably gonna call through, we've been calling through twice by now, uh, the answer.
Do you know, do we have any other school systems in the area fighting the same thing?
I have not talked to anybody else to answer them.
No, I was just curious.
No, I'm, yeah, I'm not asking anybody else.
Yeah.
But I do plan on reaching out to them again today, uh, see if I can't get a, get a little bit of help.
I can't see if they have a, any of those responses.
Yes or no would be great.
Yeah, just in the time that they've taken to tell you they don't have enough days.
All they gotta do is prove, but I know, I believe the, and I don't know for sure the process they go through. I don't know whether the state board approves it or the, the state superintendent approves it. I know the changes that they've had, that, so I don't know.
I mean, man, we should be fine with hours, shouldn't we, three days?
Uh, it'll, it'll, yeah, we should, we should be, but.
Is that, do, do we need to prepare a secondary waiver? I mean, if, if, if that wasn't approved to get a waiver.
Let me, let me see what I hear today.
Okay.
I'll, I'll reach out, see if I can hear something the next day or two and let, let you all know.
Okay, I, I was just saying, if, if, is the alternative that our, what, virtual waiver's not, that we have made this many instructional hours thus?
Well, that, 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 that information was included in.
Yeah, it should, okay.
In the letter, because they wanted it's broken out by school.
Because we can get a waiver for makeup days on hours, so.
Again, a couple of different other items just to, to leave before we, uh, get into the budget discussion. Uh, athletic trainers, um, unless you all have an issue with it, we will, uh, continue to work with online, the online sports medicine services that, with Karillion, with the athletic trainers, uh, as we have the last, what, eight, nine, ten years, however long it's been, uh, they'll, we'll continue the partnership with it. They proposed a three and a half percent increase in, in, in their, for their employees. We have, we have the, I think enough in the budget to cover that. So, uh, unless you all have an issue with that, we'll start working, we'll notify them, let them know that we're comfortable with what they provide us so that they can send us the, uh, uh, forms and documents and that sort of stuff to fill out so we can get those, send back into them.
If, uh, don't let me forget, if you've gotten close, there's something I would like to bring up with respect to that. Nothing bad.
So we'll, we'll notify them because I know she's reached out to us a couple of times to know, so we'll, we'll reach back out to them, let them know. Yeah, go ahead and submit the paperwork to us so we can start, start the process. Phone service, so you know, um, Shell has been working with PemTel to kind of get a quote for phone services for us. Be the board office, Giles High Tech Center, Eastern, and Macy. Unfortunately, PemTel does not go to the western end. There would be a savings of about four hundred and fifty dollars a month if we made this move. That would be moving away from Verizon. So I just want to make sure that you would be comfortable with making that transition.
I think so. Is there any lawsuit?
Shouldn't be any.
Beneficial resources or anything like that?
Shouldn't be, because with, with PemTel, so really, if we have an issue with a phone system, we contact, Michelle contacts PemTel. They come look at it, uh, and they've replaced a couple of them already, so.
Maybe, maybe, maybe that fits the end goal when you ask office to draw that.
It's just line three.
It's just in one line, so if you're lucky enough, you. You just have to be aware and you figure no line. Bonus payment, uh, want to, want to verify. Again, I've heard from several of you, uh, already that you're comfortable with a thousand dollar bonus payment for all, for contracted employees. It's the same thing we've done in the, I think, the last two times we had bonus payments, that was contracted employees. The only thing that would be taken out is via Medicare, seven point six five percent, so everybody will basically the same amount. State payment for that bonus payment will be made to us on June first, based on the information that we received. So I need to know your comfort level. Are you comfortable with us make, running that, for Barbara to run that payroll on May thirtieth? Or do you want us to wait and do it on June fifteenth? It's a little bit more pressure on Barbara doing it later, but if we can do it earlier, that's better for her.
What's the risk of doing it earlier? Like that something would magically change in that twenty-four hours and they wouldn't send the money and it would be out?
Yeah. We'd be out three hundred, we have three hundred and seventy-five employees, so it's three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We're getting two hundred and ten thousand, four twenty, four thirty-one.
And that's been, I mean, it's, it's well documented that, that we're getting it. There's no.
I don't.
Capyots that have been presented or?
I've not heard anything that's, that, that thinks any different that, that's not.
I think it's still doing it.
Still part of the budget, my understanding.
What is the status of the, does the governor do anything Friday?
The governor, the governor, uh, basically did, the governor, uh, last Friday, he, uh, he announced his changes. He sets out like nine hundred million dollars out of the budget, uh, uh, out of projected surplus for potential revenue shortfall in the coming year. But based on what I've seen, what I've gotten back from the base and read, none of the changes impact the amount that's listed for the removals for cap, a thousand dollar bonus, ESL or special ed. So really, it doesn't sound like anything's changed from, from, from the account pool that we got.
Okay.
What was that paper?
Yeah. And that will, that will provide also, granted, that's the last day that they're in the building, but that's still, well, if they've got a question, they can answer it instead of sending out a fifteen. Nobody's, nobody's in the building that they, to answer any questions, that sort of stuff. I'll tell her, that'll make it, that'll be, that'll be good. Last quick thing, um, as we mentioned there a second ago, uh, we had kids go TSA competition this past weekend. And had several that will qualify to go to nationals. As long as you're comfortable with it, it's gonna be about, uh, I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of nine thousand dollars to assist, to have, allow, help those kids go to nationals.
I'm going to recuse myself from voting for a discussion on this matter or a personal conflict of interest with my child and my wife, who would probably be his chapter, so.
Small nice paper, all the good ones come out of there. I assume that, but I wasn't, again, I wasn't gonna say yes before sharing with you all, but, uh, I mean, it's, uh, that's what I assumed that, because they're out there fundraising and that sort of stuff, so they're, they're covering, I think, a hundred and thirty-five dollars per kid, I think it's fifteen kids. I think there's a group of kids that aren't able to go to another conflict, but I think it's good to tell them if they go. So I'll tell them, yeah, we'll, we'll cover what we need to cover, so make sure they're able to go on this competition.
Make sure you get that refused in one minute.
Last thing I have is, is a discussion on the budget. And I'm not sure how you want to go through it, to do it. I can remind everybody what's proposed in the budget. When we start, maybe talk about individuals, we can go to closed. We discussed previously and just go, just a quick recap, go through what's, what was included in the budget. TAs, uh, back in March, I believe it was, we, the discussion was to increase their starting pay. So with the starting pay proposal was increased to eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars. That's fifteen fifty an hour. Would propose removing, uh, there's, we had four new TA positions that were not filled, were not filled this year. I would propose removing those, uh, from the budget. Bus drivers, uh, proposed starting pay increase to sixteen thousand, seven twelve for twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Secretaries at school proposed, uh, starting salary increase to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. That's, uh, for the ten-month employee, so to get eleven or twelve months, you have to do the math to get to, get to that dollar amount. Twenty-five thousand being a ten-month, uh, person. Bookkeepers was, uh, twenty-six thousand, starting pay on the salary scale, and then everything else moved below. Administrator, nurses, LPNs, uh, was proposed moving to, uh, starting pay thirty thousand, two forty. RNs was proposed moving to thirty-four thousand, nine thirty-five. That's what we talked about. Teachers, current, uh, moving the starting pay for twenty-five, twenty-six to fifty thousand, fifty-five dollars.
I've got a conflict of interest on this matter because my wife is a teacher. I, uh, can participate fairly and fully because this affects more than three people.
Also, there's two new reading specialists included. There's a new special ed coordinator position included, uh, in that, uh, in this budget. The art position that we've talked about is still there. There's still an EMT position in the budget that can be, and I, I don't know that we're gonna fill the EMT because they're not, they're not have the EMT program at the tech center. So that program, that could either be removed or can be changed to another position that, uh, could be utilized in another building for needs at the school. For example, Giles High School has requested another English position because they are concerned for, uh, the numbers remediation, the plans, et cetera with the LA. And the, and there's a VPI position in the budget as well, but I don't know whether we're gonna, gonna need that as well. Administrators, there was a, uh, proposed, um, three percent salary increase in there for all, all administrative professional, uh, positions. Also, based on comments, uh, there've been. Also, we, based on conversations we've had, comments we've had, made, um, Stride, we've, we're gonna increase the revenue we anticipate from Stride because we have always anticipated that we're gonna be close to two thousand students. We've told them that we could accept up to two thousand students. So what we have in the budget is low. If we get close to two thousand dol, two thousand students, it needs to be closer to probably eighteen million or so. I increased it to seventeen million, that's still maybe too low. But it's, that's still increased it just to make sure that we don't have to go through the process of having to have public hearings and all that other stuff to, with, with the overall budget. Central office staff, um, proposed four and a half percent salary increase for all classified staff, support staff here, as well as, uh, uh, six thousand dollars on top of that. That's the classified support staff here. Now, if we're gonna start talking about individuals, I'm gonna have a harder time talking about that.
Let's, let's talk about.
I thought we needed to go into close.
Well, we, we will, but let's talk, let's talk about the general numbers, you know, what the app, you know, what, what, what?
What we worked out there.
A hundred percent agree with you. A hundred percent agree with you.
Yes.
Thanks. That included a little bit more than we, we need to talk about to go in close. That gives you an idea, you'll see there, again, everything we've talked about that's included. This budget is based on an ADM number of two thousand, one hundred and ten. When we submitted that information to DOE, I was a little surprised it was that number, uh, but we definitely, we had to remove some students because there are students that are being educated other places, uh, many, et cetera, um, so. And also, uh, bit of information for you. I also asked, uh, Jackson Campbell to give me information on homeschool students. In October of twenty-one, we had a hundred and fourteen, if I remember correctly. Uh, October of this year, we had two hundred and eight. So they, so you can see the number there.
Can we, can he also get? Off, you know, if they get private school numbers? I'd like to see, because I, I see what the title is.
I'll see if he can give us, give me the.
Or, 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 whatever, uh, kids, kids going out of county or, uh, other options in the county, envision homeschool. Different people could track that.
Yeah, I can ask him, but he, he should be able to pull that one because there's, should be a code that they put in, if they're transferring out of county to a, a private school or if they're going to county private school, if they're transferring out of our schools already. But to do. And, and I'll share this now as well, um, boy, I guess we'll need to have a conversation tomorrow with the two board supervisors and the county administrator, but, uh, we're getting to a point where we need to really know something so we can start finalizing contracts. Because we're gonna run out of time to get contracts to everybody while they're here and then get them back. And that makes it tough if they, if they're not here to try to get them back.
They are, uh, we also need, they've got appetites for a public hearing. They, they need to set the budget by the, the next meeting, so we, we've got to finalize our numbers for then. So based on just, just that, without going into it, you're looking at two eighty-one as the ask from the county. I do think we're gonna have to have some discussion on the, the close section issues before we work, work back to that. Anybody have any general questions? We, we're gonna come back into open session and discuss this more fully, but does anyone have any general questions before?
Back on that stride, I mean, uh, I hope somewhere in the day, in discussions, you brought it. If you, if stride costs us a little money, money at all, tossing the county. County's not.
It, it's, they're not increasing, having to increase their, the county funding is well over. What I think that, in that discussion that you're referencing, so the county's net, the county always, already was getting way above what their local match was required to be, well over it. I mean, you've, you've been there, so, uh, even with, there's an increased local match with those students, but, you know, even with our, with that funding level, it hasn't caused us to say to the county, hey, you've got to increase your local match to fund it, just, just increase the local match. We've never gotten to that point because, you know, again, they've been pretty generous compared to that. But that's something we've got to watch out for because it, it would be, it, it factored in.
If that were to change, then we would have to determine, lower the number of stride students potentially. If it affected the local match.
And, and, but it also benefits us because it lowers, it lowers, it lowers our LCI as well, so we get, yeah. You'd have to be a quantum physics major to completely understand the, any funding thing.
You should, free mutation, or Q, uh, reading position. Got reading specialists, the two reading specialists are in there and the, uh, uh, that, uh, whatever you want to call it, the specialist coordinator, specialist whatever, uh, to provide assistance. Provide assistance for, for the director, specialty then.
Texted Ms. Quinn to see if she even want, okay, she'll be there in about five minutes, so. Let's adjourn for five minutes till she gets here, so maybe get in the club, make sure she's here.
She's on the way in the stream anyway.